...a D grade from Shared Hope International on our response to sex trafficking. Our children deserve the strongest legal protection that we can provide. We need to send an unmistakable message that kids are not for sale in Oregon. And I have an article from Tucson about what's happening there, just a few short facts. The targets are as young as 13, both boys and girls. They're alerted from shopping malls, parties, and public events, and more often through the internet. It mentions a girl, 16, Beth Jacobs, who ran away from her middle-class home. She said, "I didn't feel loved. Nobody loves me here. Why should I stay here?" Within a few days, her enslaving nightmare began. A trafficker, a pimp, coerced her into his car and then drugged her. She remembers a conversation she had with the trafficker. "I woke up and it was dark outside and he said, 'Baby, you know what I am?' I said, 'What?' He said, 'I'm a pimp.' And I laughed at him and I said, 'Yeah, right.' And he said, 'No, I'm serious.'" And that went on four years. She then became a prisoner. Her every move was controlled. Even her glasses were taken away so she couldn't see. And she had to complete the most dehumanizing of tasks just to stay alive. So, thank you very much for hearing our testimony, and I hope that you will support this bill.
Thank you. Senator Knopf.
Thank you, Senator, and committee members. My name is Tim Knopf, State Senator, District 27, representing Bend, Redmond, Sun River, and Tumalo. And I'm before you today to support the bills. And the most important thing is that we get something done on human trafficking this session, regardless of what bill it is that moves. We need to, I believe, deal with this issue because since the legislature has acted, and it's acted several times on this issue, it doesn't appear to be enough to stop essentially the pimps and the Johns from continuing to further victimize children, women, young boys. And the heroes in this whole effort to try to crack down on human trafficking are going to be testifying, and they're the folks behind me. And they testified in the House Committee yesterday. And the stories and the things that you're going to hear are just gut-wrenching, emotional, and we just can't continue in our society to allow these people to be victimized when I believe it's within the legislature's ability to send a clear message, a strong message, that we don't want you here. You can't do this to our kids, to our women, to our boys. And it needs to stop. There are people who are working every day on this issue, and it's happening in every Oregon city. This is not a big-city problem. This happens, you know, this happens in Bend. This happens in Medford. You know, this happens on the coast. And I believe that if we upgrade the penalties for this, especially for the pimps and the Johns, and create a felony status, I believe that that will go a long way toward helping to alleviate this problem and give law enforcement more tools to charge these people appropriately because many of them, many of the Johns and the pimps skate from these charges and don't get the punishment that they need. And one of the things that the Johns are really afraid of is the conviction. And so, lots of times, the misdemeanor thing really doesn't, it really isn't enough of an incentive. What they don't want is the felony conviction and for their wife and their employer and other people to find out about it. And so, I just encourage you to, let's do what we can to stop this scourge in the state of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the panel? Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
We have, I guess I'm going to call it preset or requested panels. Unfortunately, I do not have all the full names, so I'm just going to name off the ones that are, the panels that I understand are supposed to be presenting. Rebecca Bender, then I have Maria, and then Brianna. So, I'm not sure the last names on those last two. Ladies, thank you very much for being here. It sounds like maybe you gave testimony yesterday, and if you did, then you know that you need to give your name, no address, just your name for the record before you give your testimony.
My name's Carrie.
Okay. And if you don't want to give your last name, that's fine with me as well.
Thank you, Chairman Przyansky, and the members of the committee for hearing me today. My name's Rebecca Bender, and I'm a survivor of sex trafficking here in Oregon. I was born and raised in Josephine County, and I come from a middle-class home. My dad worked at a lumber mill, and my mom was a stay-at-home mom. I was a good kid in school. I got a 3.8 GPA at Grant's House High School, and I played varsity sports for the soccer team. I was an all-state goalie. I was accepted at Oregon State University into the architecture program, and my future seemed very bright. That summer, I moved to Eugene, Oregon. And while at a party near campus, my trafficker approached me. He began to date me, just pretending to be my boyfriend. Took me to lunch, took me to dinner, took me on dates. This happened for nearly six months. Come to find out later, he had actually approached several girls near campus, and I was the only unfortunate one that took him up on the offer to go out to dinner. After the six months of dating me, he asked me to move in with him, and I was very flattered, thinking that finally I'd met my prince charming and the tables had turned for me. He lived in Portland, near the Johns Landing exit, and as soon as I moved in with him, the beatings and abuse began immediately. He forced me to sell myself up and down 82nd Street, beat me till I was unrecognizable, been hospitalized for dehydration and exhaustion, driven up and down the I-5 here in Oregon, putting myself, he put me on websites to sell me over the internet. I didn't need to necessarily always walk the streets. That's not typically what human trafficking looks like in our state. Human trafficking is, there's internet, there's human trafficking. He took me all over the U.S., Vegas, New York, Seattle, L.A. And after nearly six years of being held against my will, the FBI finally raided the home that I was in for organized prostitution. I'm very thankful that they did because it allowed me an avenue to escape. I'm also fortunate enough that at that time, I was able to call my mom and ask her to buy a plane ticket to get me back home here to Oregon. There's a lot of human trafficking victims out there that don't have the support system, that they don't have a family they're able to call and ask to put a plane ticket on their credit card. There's a lot of girls out there that have no way and no one to call. After four attempted escapes, my trafficker did end up flying to come threaten me and get me in my hometown. Flew into Medford, Oregon, right into our little airport. Stayed at the Candlewood Suites Hotel right across from the airport, and he found me at Botnik in Grants Pass. When people say that this horrific epidemic doesn't happen in our small communities, horror fills my heart because I can imagine walking amongst you with my trafficker right next to me, and the fear that gripped me on the inside to just rather go with him than be so humiliated, embarrassed, ashamed, and hurt. This is the typical story of what happens in America, and more importantly, here in Oregon. The first time I was taken to Las Vegas and taken to an escort service, the phone girl asked me to get her a pack of cigarettes. My pimp, my trafficker, took me to a convenience store, and I handed him my Oregon ID to buy the cigarettes. And the cashier said, "Are all of you from Oregon?" And I said, "All of who?" He said, "You know." That always stuck with me because I met many, many girls from the Oregon area in Las Vegas throughout my time being trafficked. I currently have a 16-year-old foster daughter. She was placed in my home in November. She's a victim of human trafficking from the Josephine County area as well. She was held against her will for three weeks in a bathroom and injected with over 200 meth injections at the age of 14. She was sold for $50 an hour to men over the age of 50. When the police finally found her, they took her here to Portland, or up to Portland. It was the closest place that had the physical and mental capability of treating her trauma. It was there I met her as a current mentor. I'm the director of mentoring for Redemption Ridge. It's domestic minor safe house down in southern Oregon. It's been a hard road having her in my home as my foster daughter. She's 14, and the trauma's severe. We talk a lot about fiscal impact of human trafficking and how increasing the sentencing might have a budgetary concern. But my concern is how much it's cost the state already for this one child. We've probably spent between $35,000 to $250,000 per year, per child, with not very good outcomes. My foster daughter not only is on the Oregon Health Plan, and we get money for her, recompense for being her foster family, but she has mandatory counseling, drug treatment, she's in and out of rehabs. I also know that there tends to be a concern about the sentencing for the Johns and the traffickers. My concern is that we stop calling it prostitution when it's a child, and we start calling them victims of child sex abuse. We would have stricter laws for someone that raped a child. If a stranger raped a 14-year-old girl, he would have severe consequence. I'm asking, instead of calling these children prostitutes, which gets a negative connotation, that we start looking at them as children that are being lured into this lifestyle that they didn't know it was on the other side of the doors. My 14-year-old foster daughter, when she was taken by her trafficker, the doorknobs were turned backwards to lock her in when she got to what she thought was going to be a weekend party. 13-year-old girls don't drive themselves up and down the I-5. They don't rent hotel rooms with their credit card. They don't use their credit card to put ads on internets. There's someone else that's 18 or over behind this horrific epidemic. We need to start looking at that instead of calling these children criminals. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much. Who'd like to go next?
Hi, my name is Marie. I was about five years old when I was first involved in child pornography. The main question I've gotten is, how could this happen and your mom not intervene? The answer is, my stepdad would tell my mom that we were going to McDonald's when we were leaving, we were going to someone's house. At nine years old, my stepdad took my virginity, and he started selling me to guys that he called friends. I was 11 when I was first introduced to IV drugs. I had run away many times from the time I was seven to 12. One time, when a police officer brought me back home, I told him that I, what was going on, and he still gave me back to my parents. The last time I ran at 12, I spent a lot of time on the streets where I felt safer. I never really broke away from him for any substantial time until 12. At 12, I woke up one night and saw my stepdad in bed with my two-year-old sister, making sexual body movements on her, and I knew that I had to tell someone. I had thought he would leave my sister and brother alone if he hadn't. I told someone at school the next day. They came and took us out of the home and placed us in separate homes. At 12, I ran from foster care. The Child Protective Services filed a missing children's report. I spent most of a year on the streets, staying in vacant houses with a small group of homeless kids. On my 13th birthday, a so-called friend of mine took me to a park. My dad was there and put me in the car and took me back to the house. I don't know why my friend did this, but I think my stepdad approached him on the pretense of helping me. I was again sold to friends, but this time I was locked in the basement. While I was listed as a missing child, people were not looking for me at home. That's probably when I really felt mad, and I think he was more vengeful, but there was nothing I could do. I was 14 and a half when I had my son in the basement as a result to one of his friends. Soon after my baby boy was born, my stepdad took me down to Las Vegas to a woman in a trailer park. I know little about her, but that I should get out of there, so I ran from the person's house where he put me. I worked under the table doing telemarketing, saying I was 22, and I lived with a passionate wife, but I never told my story. Right after my 15th birthday, detectives found me, put me in the juvenile place, and they put my four-month-old son in Child Haven. They said they had received an anonymous tip, but I don't know who it would have been. They sent someone down to get me and my son and brought us back to Washington. My son and I were separated. They put me in a group home, and I assumed that they put him in a foster-to-adopt home. And I took off from the group home. One night at a drug party, I met a man in his 30s. He was nice to me, and I stayed with him until I was about 16. I would later learn that he was what is called a finesse pimp. He gave me nice clothes, good food, a nice home, and drugs. He always said that he just wanted to make me happy. He never beat me or hurt me personally. He did sell me for sex at parties at very large homes to politicians, doctors, and other wonderful, powerful people with expensive cars and clothes, up and down Interstate 5 in Washington and Oregon. Right after I turned 16, I took off from him and went back to the streets. I wanted to be a kid with a normal family and life, but it wasn't to be. I went back to abandoned homes and doing drugs, selling drugs, and just being mad at the world. I wasn't prostituting. I never prostituted myself when I lived on the streets. I was just walking to the mall one day in the rain when a car pulled up and offered me a ride. Instead of proceeding to the mall, he took me to his home and locked the garage. I went into the house where the doors were locked from the inside. He took the stance of a boxer and came at me, and he busted my lip. I ran to the garage and got into the unlocked car. He got in and said that he would take me back to the mall, but instead drove under a bridge overpass where he told me I wasn't getting out. He had the doors locked somehow from the inside, and I couldn't get out. He started hitting me, and I stabbed him with a little knife that I always carried for protection. He got out of the car bleeding, and I was able to get out of the car then also. He had somehow unlocked my sight as well. I stood watching him and the people slowly gathering around us for quite a while. I think I might have been in shock. A woman screamed at me, and I left. The police came a few weeks later and arrested me in a low-income housing development. The lawyer representing me said that five or six women I never met came forward from the community to support me. They were interviewed by the lawyers and gave testimony that the man had beaten them up also. He was their regular John. While this should have supported my defense, it could have also affirmed me as a prostitute, unworthy of a defense penalty somehow. My attorney felt that because who I was, I should take the deal. It seemed I did not deserve the self-defense plea. While they never called me a prostitute in the process, they seemed to imply that I somehow should be, should accept the violence that came with that title. They said I shouldn't, they said I couldn't get self-defense because I had a weapon and he didn't. His fist seems like weapon to me. They arranged a plea deal and said they would go for 28 years if I went to trial. I was charged with manslaughter and sent to adult prison where I served five years. I had always wondered if I was an ordinary teen from a good home who was picked up, walked into the mall, then beat by a man and found bleeding with a split lip if I would have ever gone to jail. Would they have taken the time to have gone back to his house to see the doors that locked from the inside, took the time to listen to the woman who said this former boxer had hurt them too? I'm now working for Shared Hope International after being in their nine-month skills program. I work to help other women. But I have a felony that doesn't allow me to ever do many jobs because of the inability of felons to get professional licenses. I'm also here to tell you that all those Johns that ever rented me, it wasn't their first time. It was never their first time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brianna, and I'm from a small town up in Washington. I'm the youngest of five children, and my parents are still married. I grew up on a beautiful 20 acres. I had really good grades all throughout my schooling, and I played varsity sports as well, volleyball, softball, cheerleading, dance, gymnastics. I wish I knew back then what I know today. The first time I met Nick was in 2010. I was a senior in high school, and he came into the cafe where a waitress sat. Nick told me that he was just at a strip club in Portland, Oregon. He told me that he was, he stopped by there on his way, that he had some work that he was doing in Oregon, and that he stopped by the strip club on his way home. And I didn't think anything of it at the time, and the conversation quickly turned to me, where we were just talking, and he came off really genuine and kind, and he had just really kind eyes, and he was flirting with me and just paying a lot of attention to me. At the end of the conversation, he gave me his cellphone number, and he asked me to call him. And I thought, wow, what an awesome guy. We had like everything in common. It was crazy. Like, he lived in Seattle, and I wanted to live in Seattle. And, you know, it was just like one thing after another. It was like, we just had so much in common. Three weeks after I met Nick, we were going to go on vacation to Arizona. It was Christmas time, so it was going to be during my Christmas break from college. I was a senior, but I was going to college at the time, it was my second year. But I found something out that devastates me to this day. Nick is a human sex trafficker. Nick was taking me to Arizona to sell me to a different pimp. And worst of all, I was stalked for an entire year before Nick ever came in and made his first move on me. This means that his friends were stalking me for a year, pretending to be regular customers in the cafe that I worked at, gaining little bits of information about my life, things that I cared about, so that he was able to come in and coerce me in a way that I thought he was my friend. While I knew Nick and hung out with him and talked to him, he gave me a cellphone, and it was never sexual. It was friendship. He gave me a cellphone, and he put his number in there and, on speed dial. And later with police, after they identified he was, he was trafficking me, we identified through the phone that he was trafficking other women as well. And one of the text messages specifically read, "My new hot blonde in Medford." And so, this just tells us that, you know, Nick's group was trafficking women from Seattle all the way down the I-5 corridor to Medford and beyond. It really upset me about five months ago, and I know that they're not bad people in Medford, but this happened to me three years ago. And five months ago, we did a newspaper article in Medford on human trafficking, and I believe Rebecca was a part of it. And she was sharing her personal story, and we called the newspaper and asked them to make a statement about sex trafficking in their town, and kind of what they're doing about it now to address the problem. The police officer, and, you know, I can't, I didn't know. My dad didn't know, okay? So, I can't blame the police officer for not knowing, but he said, "We don't have that problem here." And it just, it breaks my heart because this was three years ago that there was a girl being worked on in Medford, and where is she now? So, I just, I'm here today to ask you to, to put this through, to protect girls in your state so that this is a safe place for families to raise their children and a place that girls are not brought into to sell to a market. I just want to thank you on the committee today for hearing our testimonies, and I want to thank you for passing through a strong bill that will make Oregon a safer place for girls to grow up, a place where girls won't be robbed of their innocence and of their childhood, and instead rescued and restored instead of incarcerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for any other panelists?
Could I make a comment?
As you can. I have a question.
I just want to thank you for coming. I know this is difficult for you, and it helps us a great deal, so thank you.
Ladies, thank you very much. Marie, I do have one question for you. When you was telling your story, you talked about being convicted. Can you tell us what state you were in at that time?
I was convicted in Washington State. However, I was, I would always bounce from Washington to Oregon when I lived on the streets. Also, when I met my finesse pimp, we lived in Oregon.
Right. No, I understand. I just want to get some clarification. The other thing that you mentioned is that at one point early in this situation, you reached out to a police officer, and that individual, as you said, didn't believe you or didn't trust you, or didn't do...
Yeah, because he said my story was too, what do you call it? Not colorful, but it was just too hard to, like, yeah, right, that, there's no way that's happening. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. What state was that in?
That was in Washington.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, during the time that I was in the foster care system, I had two, I had two caseworkers. I mean, it wasn't common, but I had two caseworkers. So, I had one in Oregon and one in Washington, and they worked together, you know, to try and help me and stuff. A lot of the foster homes, a lot of caseworkers, like, they didn't understand. Like, they didn't know the trauma piece. They didn't know, like, I was always a borderline. So, a lot of me, I mean, if, I know there's Washington and Oregon, but I mean, it really was, like, everything that happened was, like, both states, literally. So, yes, sir.
Would I be able to add something?
You may.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name's Rebecca. Not only am I a survivor from the Oregon area, born, raised, trafficked out of, my traffickers still reside here. When the FBI raided our home in 2007, all four of us women that were trafficked in the home at the same time were too afraid to testify out of fear, mainly especially because the few times I had a skate, he flew to Medford to get me. So, we were very afraid that he knew where we lived, he knew who our family were. My family was held against me. I had a daughter, and he told me that if I didn't come home some nights, that I would find my daughter out on the corner. And I know that right now, he did a year in prison for tax evasion because none of us would testify against the trafficking, but he's still out. He's still there. He's still in our state. I also wonder what would have happened had the FBI came in with a rape advocate, a woman maybe, and took me and the other girls to the side and said, "This isn't your fault. We're not blaming you. We're not going to put on rubber gloves and pretend like you're dirty." I wonder if that would have happened rather than come in and handcuff us all, put assault rifles at our heads where we have to scream, "There's children in the home. Please don't hurt them." I wonder what would have happened if we were treated that way instead. Unfortunately, I don't have the opportunity to go back and change that, and that was a long time ago, but the importance of law enforcement training is so crucial. With my foster daughter, who was just in treatment last year, she was in treatment here in Oregon, and the treatment facility she was in wouldn't believe her story. They didn't believe that she was held against her will in the house for three weeks. But with my first visit as her advocate and mentor, I knew within 15 minutes she had been trafficked. There's something with training that takes place when you just, there are specific things that really are different between a domestic violence case and a human trafficking case. There's very few little things, but if you're trained on what to look for, you'd be able to identify them. And I believe that had my foster daughter received the title as a trafficking victim, she would maybe have been given trauma bond treatment or treatment for night terrors rather than just being self-medicated, you know, medicated there in the, in a locked facility, which the state was paying for. I just think the treatment could have been different, and we might not be going through some of the trauma that we're experiencing now in our home. I'm newly married, and my husband and I have had a baby a year. I'm very grateful for my new life. But it's hard having her in our home, trying to get her to undo all of the trauma that's happened to her, not only through the trafficking ordeal, but the lack of treatment she's received has been hard.
Thank you very much for your time. Ladies, again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have another panel. This next panel's going to be four individuals, so you'll need to bring another chair up. JR, you just, Mike Geiger, Mike Gallagher, and Jeff Rumpel.
I'll have to get a bigger table next time.
We'll squeeze in.
All right. Gentlemen, you'll give us your names before your testimony, and whoever would like to start off.
I think perhaps I'll go ahead and start, sir. My name's Sergeant Michael Geiger. I'm the supervisor of the Portland Police Human Trafficking Unit. Sir, do you want us to introduce ourselves individually and then offer our statements, or have us all introduce ourselves and then start?
Why don't you just individually, we'll do it, and we'll hold questions till everyone gets through, and then we'll ask questions at once.
Okay. Perhaps a little bit of background so I can kind of frame into context my thoughts, particularly in light of the panel that just presented here, which, I will tell you, I'm a 24-year police veteran. Since January 2002, I've worked in the Portland Police Sex Crimes Unit Detective Division, except for three years when I was a homicide detective. I started off as a sex crimes detective, and now I supervise the sex crime unit and human trafficking component that we've just begun as of about two and a half years ago. Now, what we've done over the course of some time, we've been trying to understand ourselves. What we all know now is this growing global criminal phenomenon that is child sex trafficking. And part of what befell my unit was to understand this particular crime category and develop strategies on how we were going to combat it. The difference... The difficulty is, is that victims of sex trafficking, in most circumstances, do not even self-identify as a victim of a crime. They certainly don't report. So in the traditional reporting system, if we're the victim of a crime, whether it's a burglary or our car was stolen or somebody did some other kind of crime, our first thought would be to call the police. What I'll tell you is that does not occur for this particular crime category. The information that I receive comes through third-party sources such as anonymous calls to DHS Child Welfare. Concerned family members or counselors or medical officials who suspect that something's going on with a child, and they call the child abuse hotline, and those reports are all forwarded to me. Part of our work is, number one, to identify the victims first and foremost, because if we don't know who they are, then how are we going to bring resources to bear in order to extract them from their life and to bring people accountable for those people who are exploiting them? And so part of what I've been engaged in is trying to understand the criminal phenomenon. And as I try to work through this, part of what's helped me is to understand exactly what we're talking about and frame it in the kind of conversation that accurately depicts what we're talking about. In my own mind, and it comes from the way that we've ultimately structured our police department, um, for as far back as I think anybody can recall, the Portland Police had one of our institutional organizations, it was called the Drugs and Vice Division. Now, as we all know, when we think about vice, we think about things like prostitution and other things that are unhealthy for us. What we did just a few short years ago is we removed that component from our drug unit, and it was brought down to the sex crimes unit so that we would begin investigating these crimes as a sexual assault, as a sex crime. And it fell under the authority of the sex crimes unit, which, of which I was the leader of. And so I began to think of this in terms not of prostitution, but of child sex trafficking, a sexual assault, child sexual abuse. Because as I was trying to work through and try to understand this, what was occurring is people were paying children in order to have sex with them multiple times a day. And then the more times we were able to have conversations with young people that were recovered from this, you hear their stories of how many times a day they were sold to strangers. And then as our investigation unfolded, we began to see all the different places that they've been, all over the state of Oregon, from Portland to Salem to Eugene to Roseburg to Medford, Klamath Falls, the Oregon coast, eastern Oregon, Bend and Redmond, all over the place, and we're able to track their movements. And we began to think about the extent of trauma that's inflicted upon these children because what can only be described as multiple episodes of child sexual abuse. And then we began thinking about our target primarily, and I'll admit, our primary target became the trafficker. Who was the person who was exploiting them? Who was the person who befriended these young women in order to gain their confidence for the sole purpose of getting them to fall for them so that they could bend them to their will and then sell them in order to make money for themselves, totally disregarding the damage, oftentimes the lifelong damage that is inflicted upon these young girls? But one of the things I think maybe we've been talking a lot about lately is what ultimately drives this crime. And I think we would all agree is that what drives this crime is the demand side of the equation. Absent demand, there is no supply. And too often, I think we haven't really given as much thought, and when I say "we," I'm talking about me as a police official and the way that we've worked through our duties, is recognizing the part that buyers play in this criminal phenomenon. So we are developing strategies to identify who the buyers are, because we've come to believe that if we can reduce the number of buyers, then we're going to reduce the demand. If we can reduce the demand, we can reduce the victimization of the children. And in my mind, if we can stop this ongoing abuse, oppose some kind of sanction that will be meaningful, one that will send a powerful message about what we think about this crime category, then I think we will begin to see some success. And so what I'd like to do, i-if I could, is simply introduce you, this is part of our team, uh, our officers in uniform, Officer Ruppel and Officer Gallagher, they'll introduce themselves, they're our field team. They're the ones who are working the night shift in Portland, out on the streets every single night, they're out doing stings, they work very closely with my detective unit. And right back there is Carter Bernard, she's one of my detectives who works full-time. And we've tried to develop this team approach, um, and in cooperation with social services and advocacy, because in our view, it's one thing to restore or to rescue a child, it's another thing entirely to restore that child. Uh, and it takes a partnership that provides adequate victim services, support services, recognizing the crime for what it is, and bringing to bear all the compassionate people who can come together to meet the child's needs, understanding that each child has different needs and we need to be able to adjust in order to meet those. And just before I turn it completely over, I was asked by Brianna to point out that the officer who ended up essentially rescuing her from this is a friend of mine, he's a Vancouver Police Sergeant. Uh, he's an amazing man, I wish he could be here today. And I think we would all attest that, like most people, we as police officials have a lot to learn ourselves, and we're working to understand it and to do what we can to, to help, um, eliminate this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Jeff Ruppel, I'm a police officer for the city of Portland, I work our prostitution coordination team along with Officer Gallagher. Um, I'm here to speak about the Johns' behaviors. Um, between Officer Gallagher and I, we probably talk to up to 10 Johns a night, it's hundreds over the last couple of years for me alone. I couldn't even give you an accurate estimate. But what I want to talk about is the impact on Johns and what they're really concerned about. And this is coming from our contacts on the street, this coming from the Johns School that we both, um, present at in Portland. Johns are not concerned about the financial impact. They're, they're concerned about their, um, exposure to the crime, their exposure to the media, their exposure to having their picture in the paper or in different busted magazines or online. They're concerned about how their jobs will find out or their wives will find out about, um, the arrest, they're not concerned about the financial impact. For instance, last night when we got back to work after we testified, we got on one of the popular websites where Johns can post advice to each other, and one of them was about the $10,000 fine that was imposed, I think, in 2011. And there was, uh, comments about how they can try to get that reduced and, and different ways to fight that. It's just, it's not the concern. I want to talk about, um, who the Johns are, they're professionals, they're people that make them, that make money. Um, you know, we were talking yesterday that if one of us got arrested for this, we could come up with the $10,000 to get out of this without getting in too much trouble or noticing. It would be a lot of money, but we could do it. Um, you know, the Johns are the doctors, they're lawyers, they're business owners, CEOs, CFOs, and they're even members in law enforcement. And we've seen that. And they come from all over the U.S. to Oregon, it's a destination state to pick up prostitutes. And this includes, and a lot of times, they target the very, very young ones, whether it's to fulfill fantasies or things maybe they think they can't do otherwise that would be legal, they target the young girls. And, um, pimps will post ads, um, for the women that specifically say, "We'll provide certain fantasies that I won't get into," but, um, them being young girls, and they're targeting that. To think it's just a Portland problem is very naive. Uh, we get calls from agencies all over the state, uh, Washington County, Clackamas County, Salem, Albany, Redmond, Deschutes County, Seaside PD, all these agencies have called us and said, "Hey, we're starting to see these issues," or "We have this victim," or "Do you know anything about this woman?" They're, they're calling us, asking us for advice. And these are just Oregon cities, we're getting them from Washington as well. And it's, it's not, I think, a willful neglect of the problem by the officers, it's not understanding what it is. What we're seeing in Portland, um, due to some of the training that, um, we as a unit provide, officers are starting to recognize these circumstances in, in domestic violence calls, in kidnapping calls, in welfare checks, things like that, they're starting to recognize this dynamic and pass it on to us. So I think the training aspect is very important to law enforcement. The only thing I just want to leave it with is, I talked about the fine, it's not being what a concern. I guess the question to the state of Oregon, you know, does the state want to prevent or deter Oregon being a destination location, which I think they would do by making this a higher level crime? Or do we simply just want to make it more expensive, which is what we did in 2011 that just doesn't seem to work? Thank you.
I'm Officer Mike Gallagher, I work with Officer Ruppel and another officer, Officer Christensen, up there in Portland, part of the prostitution team. I've been with Portland for a little over 21 years and been working prostitution investigations for almost that whole time, most recently full-time with the prostitution team. And in my time, I've probably talked to close to 2,000 prostitutes, female victims of trafficking. The stories that you heard today from the three ladies is stories that I have heard hundreds of times, almost verbatim, the same types of stories, so their stories are not unique. Just try to emphasize that, that what they're telling you happens every day out there. And unless we do something as the state to, to step up and change the dynamic here in Oregon, it's going to continue to happen that way. Um, as Officer Ruppel said, Oregon is a destination state. We have, have arrested Johns, literally have picked up their cars at the airport, their rental cars, and literally driven from the airport and stopped to pick up a prostitute to go to their motel room before they even check into their motel room. Airport Way has hundreds, not hundreds, has several large motels where the victims are trafficking, well, weren't rooms to cater to these men coming into Oregon on business trips. Uh, it's a very busy location for that type of activity. Um, and unless people realize how big it is and how it impacts the, the victims out there, I think we just tend to overlook it. Um, there's numerous websites out there that cater to these people, as you said, there's blogs out there, there's websites all over the United States. One of them is called Backpage here. In one 24-hour period of time, this is the, the list of ads that were printed on Backpage for Portland, there was 143 ads for Portland, and you can basically pick any type of woman that you want. You want young, um, you type in the word "young" in your search engine, and one of these, I'm trying to think where it's at, have one of them that shows, you know, basically the number of people who are young. So this is Portland, here is Eugene, here Salem, Klamath Falls, Corvallis, Roseburg. So all of these cities have a problem. And as they said before, that a lot of times it's not recognized, and that's where the training piece comes in, is getting people to understand that there is a problem in their city, just because it's not out there in front of you and, and like the Las Vegas girls in the short skirts and the see-through tops, it's going on here in Oregon, and there's people being forced into doing it. Um, prostitution's a very violent crime, and the victims are very reluctant to report it because they don't trust the police, you know, sort of that general overview that they've been told by their pimps not to trust the peace, the police, to lie to the police, the police are just gonna arrest you. And the Johns take advantage of that, too. They're very violent towards the, the victims who are out there, the females that are working, because they know it's not gonna get reported. So we need to have something that's more, a bigger hammer to deal with these things because the money thing is not an issue with these guys. It is not a, an issue as far as they're concerned.
Good morning. JR E. Jufusa with the Multnomah County District Attorney's Office.
JR, could you move the mic?
Sure. Chair members of the committee, I have been involved in prosecuting these cases for the last five years, both adult victims and minor victims. And what I can say is that, uh, this crime is funded by money, and that money comes from the demand. And the, uh, victims that I see, um, are required to make a certain amount of money every night in fear of either being abandoned or physically hurt or, uh, locked up or threatened or their family threatened. And these individuals, the buyers, fuel that. And in every trafficking case that I've been involved with, the ultimate goal of these traffickers is money, and that money comes from the buyers. And to deter these men, I believe that these, uh, bills will help in sending a message, but also deterring them by a felony conviction and other means which we do not have the tool, which we do not have the tools to deter them today. I was involved in the, uh, bill two years ago that talked about, uh, trying to increase or that increased the fine for the men involved. And in my recollection of that talk, I was told at the time that it would not be possible to increase that to a felony. That was my request. I was told at the time it would not be possible to, uh, make it a registrable offense. I was told at the time it would not be possible to make it a felony, let alone a Class B or Class A felony. That was my request at the time, and I was told that we should get what we can at the time, which was a large fine. Now, I have not seen any deterrence based on that large fine, I do not hear buyers or see buyers on blogs that say, "Hey, because of this large fine, I'm gonna rethink what I'm doing," or "I'm gonna stop doing what I did before." I don't see that. And unfortunately, the way the law, law was written, uh, I think it's 167.008, there is still the ability for a judge to reduce that fine based on the ability to pay of the John. Because of that, I know that the cases that I've been involved with, their next question is, "I'm gonna argue to reduce the fine because I can't pay it." A felony is not something that you can reduce by asking a judge to reduce it, just as a fine is. A fine is, a felony is not something that you can break into three-year incremental payments and deal with in some way, shape, or form. A felony, I think, is more fitting of the actions, uh, that these men are participating in. And in the victims that I've talked to, what, uh, I've heard multiple times is that these men treat these victims sometimes worse than their traffickers. They've said to me that, you know, "At least my trafficker was nice to me, these men are awful to me." And as we know, uh, from Officer Gallagher and Sergeant Geiger and Officer Ruppel talking about it, that there are minors out on the street, on the internet every day, that these men are purchasing multiple times a day, and that money is going into these traffickers' pockets. And without that money, these traffickers would do other things. And so I, uh, come here to support for the ODAA and for the Multnomah County DA's office these bills, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? Senator Dingfalter first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate your testimony. I have a question. This could, uh, pertain to, to either of the bills or any of the bills, I should say, but right now I'm looking at, uh, Senate Bill 786. There, in particular, Section 4, uh, which talks about, uh, DPSST shall ensure that all police officers and certified reserve officers are trained to recognize, investigate, and report cases involving labor trafficking and sex trafficking of children and adults. We heard some testimony saying how these young women were treated, and I, and I understand that, I'm sure every department probably has their different, um, procedures, but I'm curious about how investigating and prosecuting the crime of, uh, child sex trafficking differs from prostitution. So maybe both of the police bureau and the DA's office can talk about that.
Perhaps I can, the distinction between prostitution and child sex trafficking? Well, one of the first ways in which I draw a marked distinction is by drawing essentially a line of demarcation between the adults and the children. And I think we frame our questions and our arguments differently when we're talking about children because we're talking about an age group that is still developing. Um, we have, my understanding of the way our laws have been put into effect is we've always built-in provisions within our legal system to provide, to provide extra protections for children. Because of their inability to care for themselves, their inability to understand the nature of what's happening with them, we have seen it as our duty and our obligation to protect them in every way with, that they, that we can, knowing that they're not able to do so themselves. And when we think about prostitution, there are adults who will willingly engage in prostitution for reasons of their own. Uh, whether we would agree with them or not, there are those who would choose to do that. One of the things that I have found from talking with adult victims is that they are just, they're actually a manifestation of child sex trafficking. Officer Gallagher, Officer Ruppel, and some of our team has actually started asking adults that they encounter how old they were when they first started. And what we're hearing very often is they started when they were a teenager. And what I see is, if we were to look at a child's life as a continuum and identify at which point we intersect with their life, if there is no, if there is nothing that steps in during this child's life from where it begins, what we're going to see on the adult side is a continuation because the child doesn't know what else to do. They become adults, they stay in the life, they end up populating the sex industry, whether it's through the strip clubs or lingerie modeling or online escort services. So in my own mind, I draw a distinction between prostitution and child sex trafficking, first and foremost by recognizing that we're talking about child, children who cannot consent, who don't, don't understand the nature of what's happening to them, and also a recognition of the lifelong trauma that occurs to them, which affects, impacts- of the lifelong trauma that occurs to them, which affects all facets of their life. So the other thing, too, I think, is a language piece. When we talk about prostitution, it is hard for most of us, or at least most of us come from the perspective of we're thinking in terms of behavior between consenting adults, that while we agree is illegal, it still doesn't rise to the level of certain other kinds of crimes. When we talk about child sex trafficking, I would hope that we're not linking it into that same category.
And if I can ask the DA also to respond, but...
Can I, one of the things I thought I heard you ask was about the education piece to this, and the difference between prostitution and the sex trafficking. One of the things that we've discovered with our team is that we have, and the detectives have a very unique ability to sort of, to see what's going on out there and read sort of between the lines to see that something is actually going on, it's more so than what's right there in front of them. And I think a lot of officers go to a call, and even though a prostitution crime or trafficking crime has occurred, don't have the ability, through lack of training, to see what's actually there and what's going on. And it's more common, like our precinct, where the officers know that we work out there, for them to call us and say, I've got this case, it looks sort of weird, do you mind coming out and talking to these people and see if you can help us out? And I think that piece of the bill would help educate these officers to recognize these things that are going on out there, that are very obvious to us when we come across those. I mean, just sort of stand out like this red, you know, light bulb that's going on for us, it's very easy for us to see, but for the untrained officers, it's sort of suspicious, they don't quite know what's there. And I think that piece of the bill would help bring them a little bit further along in that education piece, to educate them to recognize that trafficking possibly is going on here, to ask a couple more questions, call detectives, call somebody that has some more experience, so those cases could be brought forward.
And could I add one more piece about the training? The advantage of DPST training, as you know, this is the beginning training phase of our police officers for the state. And so much of what they think about their job, their experiences of what they've learned in the academy, ends up determining their approach to law enforcement when they actually hit the street. I see it as a very positive thing by having that become part of the DPST curriculum, because it begins to frame their minds and help them understand what they need to look for, and also how they view victims, and how they're going to treat victims. And recognizing that domestic violence calls may have another component, and we can teach them strategies, very simple strategies, where they can take just the next two or three steps to really try to find out exactly what's going on. So I would see it as equipping them with some much necessary information that will help them be more professional, both in the performance of their duties and how they treat people they encounter.
All right, thank you. Chair Brzezinski, representative, your question about the difference between, I think you had asked about prostitution and trafficking, there's a legal definition, and that's where I think the prostitution comes in. It's an offer and agreement for sexual contact or conduct for a fee. That's the prostitution part. The human trafficking is the broad, kind of overreaching or way in which that happens. And then within human trafficking, you've got child sex trafficking. So I think it's kind of specific, a specific act is prostitution under the law, and that's a legal term that we use, because these laws compelling prostitution, promoting prostitution, and prostitution are all based on that legal definition. But as far as human trafficking, that's the broader realm of how this exists, and within that, we're dealing with minors, as Sergeant Geiger said.
All right, thank you. I've got a couple of questions for the Bureau. Since the law passed in 2011, can you give me some stats, don't have to be exact, as to how many prostitution cases y'all have actually filed, or charged, I should say, and also of those, how many were involving that you know were minor women that were being abused?
I could say that we, last year, 2012, our team alone issued roughly, it looks like 153 arrests from January to December of last year.
Okay.
I think there was a total of about 15 to 20 declines in the cases, so the arrests were issued by the state.
So of the 153, no files on 15 to 20, something like that?
Yeah, I think, I think it was roughly around 140.
Okay.
These are Johns arrests only, and that what these numbers are.
It's not differentiated. I couldn't pull up the difference.
And can you tell from your stats, or from anecdotally, of those, how many involved women who were minors?
Sergeant Geiger may be able to answer that.
Yeah, we did, just...
Just ballpark.
Colonel, we did, how many in last year? We had three in one case and four in another, just in two cases alone?
John?
Yeah.
Minors.
With the minor cases.
Oh.
We just finished one with three.
We had, sir, we had, in, just towards the end of last year, we had, if I could just highlight, two cases alone involving a 15-year-old.
I don't want to go into the details.
No, I was just going to say, there were three buyers
Okay.
that we arrested as a result of that investigation. And then we're just completing another investigation that actually just culminated in guilty pleas with four involved parties.
That was, was that three?
Three or, three or four buyers as part of the overall charge as well.
All right. With a minor?
Yes.
Okay. And then JR, can you tell us what has happened in the sense that these cases come to you or to your office? How many of these cases actually got prosecuted? And I'm really wanting to hone in on what the changes were to 2011. Your statements of the fine has been reduced down, argued. How many cases have you actually taken that were actually resolved either through settlement negotiations that were not under the statute? Because it seems to me that you can't be settling a case where it has a minimum fine of $10,000. If you are, we'd like to know that. And then also, how many second offense cases have you had come back in the sense of where someone has been convicted under the 2011 law, and then came back and had a second conviction?
We have not had any second convictions under the, since the 2011 law has been there, just based on the fact that I think cases take roughly between four and five months to go through the system. I think there's a very, very short period of time. In addition to that, as Detective Bernard just said, we have four, I would say, around half a dozen individuals who have been convicted of this charge, and they have all had set over sentencings, so that they may get PSIs and other things to argue the fine as well. So we haven't had sentencings on any of those Johns that she was talking about, as far as the mandatory minimum fine of $10,000.
All right. Can you tell us, besides these active cases that are now pending, have there been any others prior to that that would have been affected by the 2011 law?
Off the top of my head, I can think of one or two. Those, I don't know the details, other than I know that they were, there was a plea negotiation made because those men were essential in also convicting the trafficker in those minor cases as testimony.
Okay. Thank you. We have another panel that's going to be Anita Bells and Joel Shapiro. And just to kind of do a reference check, we have about four other people who wanted to give testimony on these bills, and then we have one other bill that I'd like to try to get testimony on.
My name is Anita Bells. I'm from Bend, Oregon, and I'm here speaking in support of 673 and 786. I actually asked my Senator Tim Canop to draft 786 based on my work. I travel with a lead team that goes to Super Bowl every year. We get there about two weeks before Super Bowl, and we work with law enforcement, the State Attorney General's office, and we look for domestic minor sex trafficking victims. And we saw Louisiana's law this year worked very well. We had 86 arrests and many victims rescued. And so I asked him to draft it like that law, and with the addition of the mandatory training for law enforcement and labor trafficking. I've worked in anti-human trafficking for seven years. I'm the Central Oregon Regional Director of Oregonians Against Trafficking Humans, which comes under the Oregon Human Trafficking Task Force, oversaw by Keith Beckford, who's a U.S. Marshal over human trafficking for the state of Oregon. I published a book called In Our Backyard. Be happy to give any of you a copy of that that you'd like. It documents human trafficking in the United States specifically. One of the things that came to mind as I was hearing the other testimonies was chatter that we saw on the Johns' boards and heard through the wires at Super Bowl in Indianapolis. Because of the, because of the laws that had just been enacted in Indiana, the Johns and the traffickers were taking girls across the line, state line. And this year, we set up two command posts, one in Mississippi and one in New Orleans, to address that, because Mississippi's laws are just being strengthened right now, and they weren't during Super Bowl. And my question is, and especially in working with law enforcement across the nation, how can we expect law enforcement to do their job if we haven't given them training? How can we expect them to recognize human trafficking? How can we expect them to know how to interview a trafficking victim if they haven't been taught? Because as you've heard, it's different. One other thing I'd like to address is the monetary cost for human trafficking victims as opposed to incarcerating Johns and pimps. I'd like to quote a study out of Minnesota in 2012, where they did a cost basis of what it costs to, first of all, help a victim as opposed to having them be continued to traffic. It was, the study determined that for every $1 that was spent to prevent human trafficking, which I would say reducing demand and reducing the pimp control would fit in that category. So for every $1 that was spent in that regard, it saved the state $34. That's a pretty significant savings. One of the ways that it saves is early intervention of medical problems, saves the government countless of dollars for treatment of STDs, multiple head traumas. Victims are often hit in the head because the pimps know they can stun them and control them by head injuries. Multiple head injuries, STDs, teen pregnancies, welfare, et cetera, continued counseling, substance abuse treatment, they are often controlled by drugs. Many arrests and prosecutions of sex trafficking victims also cost the system a lot of money as opposed to one arrest of a trafficker or a John. Another benefit to the government budget is increased tax revenue available to women who can live productive lives. And I'm looking at this, it's kind of a cold analysis I'm making right now, but it's a cost analysis. It doesn't take into consideration the devastation of precious lives that we saw earlier this morning. Unfortunately, what happens with our current laws is we groom these young victims to be perpetrators. If a child is trafficked and they grow up to, and at some point, they want something more. Unfortunately, we've taught our daughters in this generation, they can be anything they want, but what are they going to be? The only thing they know is sex trafficking. They become pimps, and there we are. We've gone right and completed this cycle. Unfortunately, our current laws groom them for that. So in calculating this facts, one must consider that traffickers almost 100% of the time traffic multiple victims. And one ex-pimp that I know told me he had hundreds of victims over the course of his criminal career. Putting one pimp in prison as opposed to putting multiple victims in the system is a financial impact. These two bills, Senate Bills 673 and 786, have tremendous similarities, and might I suggest a work group be brought together to discuss possible merging of these bills? I maintain strong convictions that in Oregon, we must strengthen our laws in order to give our law enforcement the tools they need to protect our children and to make Oregon a safer place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel, I need you to be in a summary mode so I can get the other people up for testimony.
Sure. Chair Brzezinski, members of the committee, thank you for holding this hearing. It would seem like there's little for me to add after the amazing testimony that you've heard from the other witnesses, but I do want to give you sort of a little bit of a policy overview. You know, much discussion has been made about whether this crime needs to be a felony or not. And as you've heard from the witnesses, that was the goal two years ago, and the compromise was, the state couldn't afford to make this a felony, so we'll settle for making it a high fine. And you've heard from the experts that that has not been effective in deterring this crime. We know that buyers of sex with children are taking advantage of technology to be able to buy exactly what they want. This is not only true in Oregon, but it's true across the country. There was a wonderful documentary, I shouldn't say wonderful, a gripping documentary called Playground, that was filmed not only in Portland, but in other cities, and they talk about how men will fly in, they will order what they want from a website, and, and as we know, they do reviews. We had some documents that we introduced in the hearing yesterday. I think that you should have that, members of the committee. One of the documents is a review of an escort, Jessica Rabbit 69. So we know that these men go on and they testify, or they comment about, about the girls that they're purchasing. This one, the John noted that she was wearing Superman socks, you know, dressed in cartoon children-type activity. And, and they, they know what the penalties are. They know that if you come to Oregon, you're not going to get a felony like you would in Washington State, or whatever state they may be from. So I think it's imperatively important that we make a very clear line in our state, in our society, that it is not acceptable to pay to have sex with children, with people that under Oregon state law cannot consent to this activity. It should not be a misdemeanor. It should be a felony. It should put them on the road to more serious punishment if they continue to do this. And being registered as a sex offender, and being a convicted felon, is a tremendously more burdensome outcome than a misdemeanor. And, you know, we don't have a fiscal yet requested on this bill. I expect or hope that that will happen soon. And we know that the state is not, you know, flush, you know, but in a little bit better position than two years ago. So I hope that we can reach an outcome that is something that is not going to overburden the Department of Corrections, but is going to help us continue to address this issue. And I'll just add one thing. I first started working on this issue a few years ago when I was at the federal level working for Senator Wyden, and when I came back to Oregon on one of the breaks to study this issue, because I couldn't believe that it was true. And I used to be in the DA's office in Multnomah County. I went in to talk to Rod Underhill, who was one of my professors in law school, and I had worked on some DV issues before. And Rod was at the time the head of the DV unit, now he's the elected DA. And I said, is this really happening? And he said, absolutely. You know, my folks and my officers that I work with, who you heard from today, are seeing this more and more. The internet's feeding it, organized crime, gang members are increasingly doing this. And he said, where we were 30 years ago in our approach to domestic violence is where we are now with our approach to child sex trafficking. So we don't have the systems in place, we don't have the law enforcement training that's needed, we don't have the prosecutorial efforts, and most of all, we don't have the laws in place to punish these people and to set the cultural and societal norms to say this is not acceptable. So I know you're in a hurry, I'm going to wrap it up there. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions? I've got one comment, Anita, and this is for Joel as well. Right now on the books, promoting prostitution is a Class C felony, so someone that's promoting it, someone that's compelling it is a Class B felony. So I just want to put that on the record.
Right.
Because your testimony seemed to be that we did not have those penalties for those type of offenses based on the testimony you gave. All right, I have three or four other people who want to give testimony.
Could I just make one really quick response? We have very good laws for the traffickers, we're talking about the buyers, the Johns, and that's where it's insufficient.
I understand.
Thank you.
Right, and I do know that they're, they are felonies.
All right. The next people I have wanting to testify is Lynn Haxton, Gell Meyer, Roger Martin.
Good morning, Chair Brzezinski and members of the committee. My name is Lynn Haxton. I'm a staff attorney with Youth Rights and Justice from Portland, Oregon. I have submitted written testimony for the committee. I'd just like to summarize my remarks. I'm here to comment on Senate Bill 786. I'm here to comment on Senate Bill 786. This bill recognizes the seriousness of the crime of sex trafficking in children, on the one hand, but also puts these victims at risk for criminal charges because it doesn't, it's not limited to applying to adults only. And one of the things these traffickers do, as you've heard from the victims, is they manipulate, romance, coerce, and then force these children to, you know, sell their bodies and give them the money. But they also force them to recruit and train other children. This would put these children at risk for being charged under this bill with a very serious crime, a felony, an A felony, as well as it's being put under the sex offender registration. So it would be, it would be a risk for the children. And it could be something as simple as a child passing a message from a trafficker to another child, because that could fall under the recruiting or attempt to recruit. So my request is I'm urging the committee to consider the Dash II Amendment to make this crime apply only to adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Let's get to the panel.
Okay.
Roger.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Roger Martin. I'm here representing the Oregon Catholic Conference. This is the third session that we have all participated in, an effort to do something about this, and the problem hasn't gotten any better. We need to expand our effort. I talked to a good friend of mine who's also a Portland policeman, who said that it's just getting more difficult. They've moved into the motels and hotels around the airport. They're off the streets. He talked to a 16-year-old girl from Florida the other day who said, and he asked her, "Why are you here?" She says, "We don't get busted here." This requires an ongoing effort. I think we need to expand. We need better education of everybody, starting with, if you'll remember, a year ago and the previous session before that, the West Salem High School English class came in. Two people testified. They were outstanding because the teacher cared enough to get all the children, all the students involved. They took it as a personal issue because they're kids their age that are being victimized. I think we need that. I won't repeat a personal incident I had with my own two daughters who were approached by one of these very slick, suave kind of guys who was soliciting for girls. They didn't believe me when we brought hard evidence. It took a week to convince two very intelligent girls, naively, from Lake Oswego, where they don't run into this kind of stuff very often. And the other thing that, my local newspaper publicizes every arrest in the city of Lake Oswego. If you get a DUI ticket, not a conviction, a ticket, your name gets in the paper. Somehow, we've got to get the names of the Johns in the newspapers. That flare of publicity will have a great deal to do with it. But I want to go back to my first point. We need an ongoing effort. I think we need some task force kind of effort with legislators, law enforcement, DAs, and other interested parties to stay on this thing until we take Oregon off the map as a place anybody wants to go.
All right, thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Chair Porzansky, members of the committee. Gail Meyer, on behalf of the Oregon Criminal Defense Lawyers Association. We do also concur with the remarks made by Mr. Martin. There is a bill that has just passed out of the House Judiciary Committee that creates a task force, House Bill 2395. It's the Task Force on Human Trafficking. It's passed out of the House Judiciary Committee. It's now down in Ways and Means. We would suggest that that is a very good place to start with the next step. There have been efforts within the last two years, but there's, what I haven't heard yet to date is the data to know what impact those efforts two years ago have had. With respect to the multiple bills that are circulating, there is on the House side a bill that mirrors Senate Bill 673, and then there's also Senate Bill 686. With respect to the crimes of trafficking, each has a different take and element. Some would require mens rea, meaning an understanding or reckless disregard for age. Some would have strict liability as to age. So there's disparate notions flowing, and we would suggest a good concentrated sit-down would be the right next step.
All right, thank you. Senator Close.
Gail, I just want to make one comment. My concern with a task force is the time that it takes, and laws all over the country have already been passed, so we know what other states are doing. We know if they have positive outcomes. So I think because girls are out there right now, and young men as well, I don't know that we can wait that long, and so I would much prefer a work group that could bring these things together. Would you be willing to agree to that?
Thank you. Chair Porzansky and Vice Chair Close, I'd love to do that. There's some in-the-weeds comments that I just won't take the time right now to make, but we would love to participate. Thank you.
All right. If y'all could step back, what I'm going to do is, I don't have anyone else scheduled to give testimony on 673, 786, just see if anyone else wanted to. All right, what I'm going to do is close the public hearing on those two. I'm going to open up a public hearing on Senate Bill 30. I want to get a couple of people's testimony in that are not normally here, so they will not have to come back. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Senate Bill 30 adds luring a minor, 167057, coercion involving a sex crime, ORS 163275, and conspiracy involving a sex crime, ORS 161450, is the list of crimes described as sex crimes for purposes of this section.
And I just want to put on the record regarding the two bills we just had public hearing on, Senate Bills 673 as well as 786. I have a note from Darryl Fuller, who is a representative for the Sheriff's Association, and they are in support of both those bills. If he doesn't make it back, he wanted that on the record. So on this one here, for the public hearing, I have Thomas Madison, and is it Marlene?
Yes.
Madison, why don't y'all come up, and we'll get at least your testimony in today.
Okay, thank you. I guess women go first.
If you can give us your full name and then your testimony, please.
Marlene Madison, and thank you for letting us speak. I hope you haven't made your decisions yet, but what I want to say is this is very emotional, as we have heard today, and I do have empathy and, you know, my heart goes out to these girls, definitely. What a horrible thing to have to go through. But I also want to say that emotionalizing and a decision on crime is what has happened with Measure 11 and a lot of these sex offense crimes. And as we have seen today, it's very heavy on the side of the justice side, and there are three sides to justice. So we have to be unemotional so that we can have a balance in justice. And one of the things, too, that I have, I've done some research, and the victims' rights groups, a lot of them are financed through Washington, D.C. They allocate a billion dollars a year. And I know that, for one thing, in Aheerst, who is the Missing and Exploited Children, she's received just this year $1 million for her work. So this is, this is definitely a business right now in the victims' rights group. I've also done some research and found that 22 members of Alec are members, are part of our legislation. And I hope that that doesn't have an effect, because I know that the prison systems they're pushing, and we need jobs, and I hope we're not pushing any more jobs in the prison industry or having a private prison industry. That's another thing that I'm concerned with because, what else did I want to say here? Convicted sex offenders, this is what I want to say about the convicted sex offenders, are unfortunately just as rare as, we take high-profile cases and we make laws out of them, but these cases are very rare. And there's some great statistics that you can find if you read this book. It's written by a professor from Berkeley, but there are tons of books written by professors or empirical evidence out there that doesn't come from newspapers or magazine clippings. And it is called Sex Panic and the Punitive State by Roger N. Lancaster, and you would find that very informative. You know, it's understandable that it brings emotion, but these laws only are feel-good a lot of times, and so I want you to really consider it not being emotional, but what it's going to do. Recidivism rates of convicted sex offenders are very low and have been, prior to registration notifications. 95% of children are abused by family members or trusted acquaintances, not strangers. And outing, and this is on people that are registered, outing thousands of former registrants who have done their time. They've already paid their debt to society and are now leading law-abiding lives will not only cause job and home loss, both linked to increased chances of recidivism, but safety and welfare of the family and minor children of these offenders will be put at risk. There was a study with Dr. Jill Levinson in 2012. A noted sex offender policy researcher found that the conviction-based rate, risk designations mandated by the Adam Olsh Act do not predict recidivism as well as risk assessment tools currently used by, I think, our state in Oregon. News outlets have a responsibility, much like lawmakers, to paint the whole picture, especially when it comes to such an important topic. It was, it is irresponsible for news organizations like the Oregonian to portray just a narrow scope of information and using terminology like predator, pedophile, pervert, when actually that doesn't define what the situation is, if they have an unemotional thing.
Ms. Madison, I'm going to need you to wrap up. Some of the stuff that you're bringing forward, I'd hate to say that we can't control what the paper says or doesn't say.
Right, okay. Well, I ask that you consider removing the registration on people that have already committed their offense, paid their debt to society, and want to move on with life. And to remove on applications, job applications, or any kind of an application where you have to put, "Did you have a previous felon?", because what that does is that places a bias, and it's hard to get ahead in life.
Okay.
And I say this for people that are homeless and everything else. So there's two sides to every story. Thank you.
There is. Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Madison.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having both of us here today. My wife, Marlene, and I are people who work diligently every day to fight against the sex offender registry. And I know that's not really the dead-on center today as far as the discussion you're talking about today of taking certain new kinds of crimes and putting them on to the list of what will become those who qualify for the sex offender registry. And I wanted to give you a perspective from somebody who was actually on the sex offender registry, that would be me, Tom Madison, on the sex offender registry. I committed a crime, or that is, I was convicted of a crime in 2000. I completed my obligations to the state in 2005, and I've been an activist to help get the truth out about the registry ever since then. And I know we're kind of short on time, and I'm going to briefly run through just three main factors that I think destroy the registry altogether. And each of you should have a sheet of paper, it's double-sided, that shows you the main points of why the sex offender registry should be destroyed. And again, today is talking about adding new crimes to that registry, but why add anything to a registry that is a failure unto itself? And imagine the sex offender registry as a kind of high-rise building. I'm going to, we're going to detonate that building, and it's structured in a way that there are three main struts that hold up this fancy office building called the sex offender registry. And the first strut that I'm going to eliminate, to bring down in a controlled demolition of this structure called the sex offender registry, is the fact that 95% of all the brand-new sex crimes that occur, based upon past federal statistics, number of state studies as well, say that the, that these new sex crimes are committed by people not on the sex offender registry. So that, right there, tells you a great deal. 95% are committed by people who are new to the system, who have never been arrested and prosecuted on the registry. The second point is that about 91% of all of these crimes are committed within the family anyway. It's not the sex offender on the registry, down the street, to the left, in that yellow house, that brown house, whatever it is. That is the second strut that has been eliminated from this structure. The third one has to do with the recidivism rate of sex offenders. You always hear politicians, and not necessarily in this room, but across the country, how high recidivism rates are for sex offenders. Well, that's been debunked completely. And the fact is that sex offenders on the registry have very low reoffense rates. There goes the third strut. This controlled demolition brings it down. The sex offender registry is a fraud on the citizens of Oregon committed by future, or that is, past legislative sessions, and that we need to get honest with parents, that when we tell them that you want to protect your kids from future sex offenses, we tell them to go to the registry, that's not true, and that's not good advice. The fact is, most of the crimes are in the family. That's where we need to educate them, and in the long run, we need to destroy the sex offender registry in Oregon and just be honest with citizens about the facts and the true nature of sex offending in Oregon.
Thank you very much.
I have one more thing.
Ma'am, we're actually over time, so if you have more testimony that you'd like to give, as your husband, if you'll get it to us in writing, then we'll incorporate it into the record.
Okay.
Any questions for this panel? All right. I'm going to go ahead. What I'm going to do is close the public hearing on Senate Bill 30 at this point. We had three individuals.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you. Gail Meyer and Darryl Fuller, who wanted to give testimony. We'll schedule this for next Tuesday. Is that all right? We'll schedule it for next Tuesday for the purpose of taking those three individuals' testimony. And Darryl, just to let you know, we did put on the record the sheriff's support for the other two bills. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn for the day. Thank you.